Good morning, everyone. I'll call the regular school board meeting to order of the Old School District 41. It's Tuesday, February 8th, 2022 at 7:01 a.m. and we are at the S R C T C conference room. Called a meeting to order and will stand to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda was in your package. Is there anything that needs to be added? We aren't aware of anything we need to add this morning. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? I'm but moves to approve. Is there a second? Sorry, Thorpe seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. We have with us our visitors today, Mr. Rockman and Mr. Spellerberg from Southeast Region Career Tech Center here in the conference room with us, as well as Brennan Bada, Anna Sel, and who is joining us remotely? Madison Taylor. Madison Taylor. So, welcome, everyone, and thank you for attending. Public communications. There were a couple of cards. There was one card, I think, card from the family of Harley Neal. And then three shout-outs. Who want to go through those quickly? And there were three more that came yesterday.
So, one was for Caleb Marito.
Marito.
Marito, always saying backwards. He's a wonderful teacher in her class. He's very fun. And it's a great learner experience. If you have a bullet, one to ten, I would give her a class of a hundred of out of ten. Another one for Mr. Marito. He's the best teacher ever. She knows how to teach a class with no problem, and her class was fun. Next one is I wanted to send out that one for admin, making a decision to cancel the game not to travel on January 18th. Realized that it was a very difficult decision, but I wanted you all to know. I sincerely appreciate the safety. That was good for sports. Thank you for ultimate deciding to keep our kids safe on that one. And then there was one, a couple, three more that came in through email. Blackboard wasn't working. First one was a shout-out to Nikki and Bobby Canoto. They treat our athletes and injuries. That are there teaching them how to prepare for their injuries. They take time to get to know injured athletes and figure out how to help them him or her with individual treatment plans. Just to stop, but thank you Bobby and Nikki for sharing professional skills with our students and athletes. Next one goes up to staff key. When everyone else says no, she said yes to announcing for the girls' basketball game on her birthday. Then after the game, since she was not able to tell, unable to tell the concession volunteers how to close up. She had had another hour of work to get everything her way. This is another example of this half going above and beyond for our school and we wanted to thank her for that. Next one, we were shout-out to the playground attendants, Miss Hagan, Miss Ollingworth, Miss Ryan. Special thanks to these ladies for putting up, great bundling up and monitoring the playground every day. Especially when it is so prepared full out. Thank you very much.
Thank you to those that submitted shout-outs. With that, we'll move on to an annual presentation from the Southeast Region Career Tech Center. We're happy to meet here at the center in February.
For CTE.
Because it's CTE month.
Very excited to have you guys as our hosts. Feel free to Well, we'd like to visit. This is something that Dan Root initially started way back as the center director. And he did tell me to tell all of you hi.
He did say hi, tell him hi boss.
Yep. He always does that to all the board members. So, with that being said, I've danced over, I've been involved since July 1st. It's been a transition process for me. I enjoyed it. And it's growing every day. That's it. This is a, is a educational thing. So, give you a little update about our center. And I think it's a good opportunity for you guys to ask questions if you have questions with board members about what we can help you by CTE opportunities for your students. So, take a look. Here's our current listing for programs, classes, instructors. Some of these instructors are based out of Wofford. As I said, we've got fourteen member schools. That don't cover pretty much swamp here in Southeast Georgia. Some quick facts. You can look on the back page there. Little over seventeen hundred students in the center system. The school here is still excited about that. And more of us, we provide services for grade seven through twelve. So, let you know what the school is, what their needs are. I'm guessing you guys have all like done the choice ready. Quick, and something that moving forward, because the twenty, or this year's freshman class will now basically utilize this as a framework for their scholarship moving forward. Students are choice ready. Scholarship. So, there used to be an academic and CTE scholarship. Now it's just going to be a scholarship that's forward. So, after going to this choice ready, it really has kids have some options, checks and boxes. And after looking at this, I said, well, you were helping to help them check many of these boxes if you can. So, these kids can be so, after going through, here's other things on the choice ready, things that we are gonna help your principals, counselors, check those boxes under each of those respective areas because those things are helping by the students. One of the biggest things is the CRPs, career reading practices. We've been doing this for six, seven years, for the sense that it really took it a while. This park and the center were the first people that did it, and we've been religiously involved with it twice a year. And now it's expected. And so, we've got the system in place. Our instructors know what they're doing, starts evaluating. It's a one to four scale. What's ranking is a soft skills. How conversation? Are you have a disagreements we get, get along? These little small things that students need to be successful. So, those are the CRPs. And so, instead of scaling from one to four, four being so, one day you should definitely work on it. So, we could send in those home to parents for no questions. I think kids know what those are. Maybe some parents have seen them, double. So, one of the things I'm kind of most excited about right away was put around the center here. They said, well, there's a, there's a cool grant opportunity that we've never seen a CTE for for this capacity. State of the world was fortunate to receive some, some better ones. And to enhance CTE centers and CTE programming. And so, to the tune of A and U dollars across the state. And we put an application in. Our application is to strengthen some of our programs and build some additional facilities. So, you can kind of see my priority listing, where the priorities lie. The direct benefits for both students. Direct is probably the most said or priority number three, where we have different rotational units we train. And you can embed, just like our mobile needs lab that we have, we're looking at adding the precision lab. We're looking at adding additional equipment to our ambulance so that can be utilized as a, as a help trader. So, that's advanced manufacturing. So, those are some of the rotational labs that all of our students hopefully will be able to have access to. And so, we want to look at those specific so. So, this is, yeah, these pages kind of just talk a little bit about that grant. Actually, these are about three pages of the sixty-five page application. So, we should know more by the end of this one, hopefully, whether or not we're doctors that receives some of those. It's an out, out match. So, but we have our scholarship tab. And this is based on the 2020 one students and we got eleven students last year. Kids memberships were first one. So, thirty-five percent of the average, the average. And there is some concern with this new choice ready with some of the requirements. And we discussed it with our cohort of counselors. Their aspect requirements. So, basically, our school is like ten or twelve kids that would qualify, one or two would get that benchmark. So, you got to take a look at that. That with the state. So, that's the way it's gonna be. You gotta have a D five, I believe, on that, right? The number of visits that's worth. When you do, you go twelve, be about ten percent. So, it's a worth, we're doing a meet-in with our counselors to give them some historical data of what has qualified, what their scores have been, to make sure that there's picture, we set that benchmark up. So, we are anticipating legislative, be able to go through to change that. So, as far as programming goes, the types of pathways that we provide to different schools that we work with. It's a free facility here at home. And it's good to take along. So, they're all listed there. They've got some online options, or they've got some ID options. Hospital credit. SAEs. Every summer, we have our actual instructors on summer SAEs, meaning that they ideally work with your students and make a visit out, talk with the employer, and just see how those employees or those students are doing it. It's really those on-the-job training skills that we urge kids that summer. But it's true, last year almost, almost hit the two million bell of our students or some of these are pretty well, so. And then that's the goals of what it actually costs to be involved in the center, well as all the other programs. You see here. And mentioned that he makes it a goal to always keep another three percent. And he goes, and we want to continue to provide good service for our schools and our ditty. And we want to keep that increase minimal possible. So, that was your increase last year. But Mr. Rockman is gonna tell you a little bit of our high-tech units that we have available. Just items that are embedded in a lot of our classes out here. Several of your instructors at the place will and just go back to the assessment piece. You guys are aware that Mrs. Precher did resign and we did accept her resignation. So, we are hoping for a counselor currently advertising. But the Mrs. Precher is only here four days a week and then we're preparing for a counselor position. Might be so, assessment probably will to cover that extra pay for a counselor. So, so, might be more than the two or three percent. Just to cover. So, yeah, on the high-tech equipment. Not allowed to use up at the high school. So, you have a couple teachers that or units. We had a former science teacher that used the avalanche cable. And some of the other biotech, those type of things. Currently, your science position is up near a little bit. So, not as much use for the science. But all here at the center, we do have some that are useful. Currently, we are going to be getting a couple new placement rivers. That is a April big use or high use. We have a lot of teachers there. Current units we have, we have two run holes. Band outside. These new units are actually all self-deep. Where the filters and everything are in the unit. So, if anyone library uses it, you're not gonna get any of those. So, it's gonna be a lot better for those same situations. It's not impossible, but around close to that, that open window, especially this time of year. So. Also, with the high-tech, I'm sure that you guys are aware that we did have, we have our band. We did lose a couple pieces of equipment in there that we're trying to salvage. One of them is definitely not gonna be salvaged, although the other one, we got a big piece. We don't know yet. Probably gonna have to send it in and have it driver, thankfully, along the way. What might be replaced? So, you guys have any questions on high-tech stuff? Any presses up any of the services or operates that the center provides? I wanna give a few shout-outs as well. Ms. Johnson, first-year instructor. Raised $1,000 for the Keep My Project, that I think directly benefit so that's pretty, pretty awesome, pretty exciting. So, I can see those kids being passionate about getting over the puberty of six, three, that one's a thing. So, off to those guys, those kids. And I think there's all the kids.
So, I remember getting the career reading practices report when Garrett was involved here. Some of the board members don't have students in CTE at that level yet. And I find it interesting if you can provide an example, not the multi-page example, but one or two pages. See what they look like. And I would, I always thought it really looks like the teachers probably have to invest quite a bit of time into doing this where you know, I realize it's something that they don't just say when they, well, I'm gonna sit down and evaluate those. It's something that they have to be paying attention to throughout the semester and out of class experiences and serve and faithfully diligently report what they're seeing in some manner and where they complete this. So, it is, it's time consuming. But it's an interesting report.
Eight term soft skills, because really there's not a soft law. You can, you can work with others, get along with others, work on that, work at it. Thanks to everybody who wants to know. As a parent, a parent teacher, or as a, I'll say as a so, it's fun to be able to give those out. Yeah. With the parents and a lot of them really, this is some of the best feedback. It's our, it's our scores, their, their grades in this effort. It's three falls. So, I'm a fan of, of the whole of parents.
So, also, I know on your, your, the grant application, you said it was a fifty-fifty match. Can you share any of the partners? You think you have the matching partners lined up? So, you're partnering with community employers or organizations? Can you share any more about that, those relationships?
So, a big share among those directly impact some specific schools in our area. Those that have expansion projects that were so their school is some of that, Ankinson will get a, a photograph there. So, because they have helped it. So, back there. So, their community development groups over there. Their economic development groups. Schools up over there, it's kicking in. So, financially. Whereas similar partnership. Of this, looking at performance over there. Our industry partners over there that we have on our application. And then specifically with our plantation units. Our own decision. We have indicated that they're willing to work with us and it's as much equipment as we can to buy some rope to go through and can I have a shot here? It's all tested equipment. And so, so it's the partners that yeah, there's a lot of people that know right now. They're, they've got checks waiting, but very much. Yeah, there's. And I know a lot of schools probably know, and part, part more on the economic development. But a lot of us directly specific schools or or too hard on that.
Great. Any other questions?
It will be about the same as it has been on the percentage wise or yeah, it's, it's actually pretty similar. Yeah. We have more freshmen out here, freshmen out here. They happen, perhaps just classes. We started that out more essentials and we have freshmen out here for a special for that. The different but they their application door, auto central and not centers. Yeah, I would say no, but I would say probably just outside of the unit now.
Anything else? If not, thank you, gentlemen, for both being here and for your continued good work with the center and for our students.
If you guys ever have any questions, don't hesitate to tell.
Great. With that, we'll move on to the administrative reports. The record show that Dave Berlin got this report in on, on time. I wanna play the second. Shout-out to Dave Berlin for getting this report in. And it was, it was an interesting report. Um, I did find it interesting that we are I have two buses that are waiting for their parts to come from. So, some boat bobbing up and down off the coast of California or something. So, supply chain issues are affecting us. Any other questions or comments on the administrative reports or anything you think should especially be highlighted? Any questions or comments, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the administrative reports as presented? Nagel moves to approve the administrative reports. Is there a second? I'm but seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further questions, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, we have action items. The open enrollment application is to carry over from last month when it was originally applied as a to a treatment. So, this is for our consideration for the 2022, three year. Is there any recommendation with regard to this?
There's
Oh, right, right. There are two.
First one, it's the one from last month. And as you talked to the parent, they are still planning to move into our district. They're not gonna move towards it. They wanna come to school in our district. So, we wouldn't have time to approve that. And it's gonna propose that. If it approved now, obviously, we'll reach this year, make sure it's still in place. Some second one is one that was, just if I remember correctly, just on the side of our district boundaries.
All right. So, is there a motion to approve these two open enrollment applications for the next school year? Well, they, they, they're ongoing. I mean, if, once they're, they've made an application and it's unless they move or request to draw. Okay. Is there a motion regarding these two open enrollment applications? I'm but moves to approve the two open enrollment applications. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the open enrollment applications? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, uh we do need to take action to set the date of our twenty twenty two school board election. End town position currently held by Ryan Rosenthal is the position which the term ends in uh at the end of the school year. And uh we need to approve the election calendar. Do you want to comment on this? Yep. So um if we're following previous years, it would be the first Tuesday, which is June seventh of twenty twenty two. Um and so that would be. The election date and then I know by March fifth. The notice in the paper, new state selection date and position. Hey, and usually the the school board association puts out an sample which. Has to, you know, if if they they might have put that the the school board election was on June fourteenth and then we would have to adjust to updates accordingly. But this year they they chose to use our preferred date, so this would be the calendar. So is there a motion then to the the proper motion would be to set the school board election for June the seventh, twenty twenty two? Yep. Okay, is there such a motion? Thorc moves to set the school board election date for June seventh of twenty twenty two. Is there a second? I'm but second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding the school board date? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. We will all be disappointed to hear there's no school policy to review today. I get all that kind of attention like they. It may be last minute. There would be, but don't be to get. Wait until next month. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to uh. The approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Is there uh a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh meeting? Nagel moves to approve the minutes of the January eleventh meeting. Is there a second? Thorc seconds. Any discussion? Have you noticed any? Right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Um next we'll consider the three historical financial reports, the reconciliation, the balance sheet and the year to date revenue and expense report, which appeared in your packet. Is there a motion to approve those three financial reports as presented? Nagel moves to approve the financial reports, reconciliation, balance sheet, revenue and expense. Is there a second? I'm but seconds. Any questions or discussion items that you'd like to highlight or point out? I have all my notes on the report so. Different places and the. Reconciliation. I have a football helmet like. I haven't been. It's on my list. I have a list to check to make sure after so many months. If something happened, if no. Added it or something. All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of reconciliation, balance sheet and revenue and expense report, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who are opposed say no. Motion passes and those reports are approved. We have a page of. Page of bills and then another small list that came by email like yesterday. So please improve all in your motion for approval. Any bills that are noteworthy?
I have safe.
So the E rate is federal program that we're a part of every year. Um basically you get a certain amount of money from the government and you get five years to spend so much of it. And it's for technology and basically anything behind the the wall because it has layering that's. So like we need to update um the. Was it wireless points when we were having conversations everyone on Zoom and different things like that sort of fifty fifty. On the most of the time, I think you always takes care of it all. We award them the contract, they get all, they get the grant, they efficiently change it, so that's so much to the school system. We have to now apply for reimbursement.
Yeah, it's all but a certainty that we will be reimbursed. Yeah, yeah, yes, not. There's no question.
It'll be for the this bill with twenty five or only fifty percent of this.
It would be fifty percent of that. Yep. But yeah, because it's mostly worth the five year coverage. Like this year we didn't have any. So then next year, you know, I didn't have five years to use. So we just did a small chunk of it. Available, so I know that uh there isn't a lot of the. All that actually layering, everything. Elementary especially.
And we the the part that we have to pay or that that we. Contribute that that's budgeted each year.
Yeah, yep.
This is twice as much as in as our budget.
Exactly, exactly.
But it'll it'll be used. Okay, any other questions on that or any other item on bills? Either those that are in your packet or the few that were received like yesterday. See, we do have a motion, right? Okay, sorry. Uh is there a motion to approve the bills to be paid as presented, both in our packet and via email yesterday? I'm but moves to approve the bills. Is there a second? Thorc seconds. Any discussion? Any further questions? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March the eighth, twenty twenty two. Issues with that date? If not, it's between deadlines for me. All right, so. It'll be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just so you're aware. We'll have visitors to support.
Okay.
Not a big deal.
All right. Anything for the good of the order? We have it pretty much from our principals today. Welcome back to the cells.
It's been an anonymous prison. I got sick of flu on Sunday night, so I had to stay home yesterday. And I went into the hospital on my surgery. I was in this room. I said I felt like the boy at the bubble. Big sign COVID and people like barely come in. Feel terrible.
All right, with that, I don't believe there's any policy that says that our organelles have to last longer than forty five minutes, so um thank you all. You want to sound this tough? All right, with that, uh I will declare this meeting adjourned at seven forty one AM. Thank you, everyone. It's a great day, but there's plenty of time to say for a little tour of the meeting that.